Hey, I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. This June 24th, 2025. We're beginning our meeting at 4:30 PM in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. At the moment, we have Councilmember Hune. So Member Norfeld is online with us. Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harman. Councilmember Christensen will be here, but he's gonna be a little late. Myself, we're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city reporter, Ms. Kimmich. We have our minutes of June 10th, 2025. Turn those to the council for discussion or a motion.
To approve those minutes, June 10th.
Second, thank you for your motion. A second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Most app approved. We have our introduction of new employees. And we will invite Mr. Johnson to come up and introduce his two new employees.
Good afternoon, council. This is Brendan Louie. He's our newest stormwater maintenance technician. And Brian Uliberry, he is a transportation technician working on signs and striping. So we're grateful to have both of them, and you can ask him anything you want. Or just, you know.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yep, they're great guys, and we're glad to have them.
Thank you for joining the team. Thank you as well. Yeah, you don't have to stay the whole time. All right, we'll now review our agenda for tonight. Regular meeting, and we have a couple of changes on our agenda. We'll invite Eric Bunderson up to go over and explain those for us.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, Eric Bunderson, City Attorney. The first one is a recognition, and this really just came out of nowhere. It was really cool. One day, the group of students just showed up at our office with a check for $1,470.72. And like one of those big giant oversized checks for the victim advocates. And so we kind of had to like do some digging to figure out where this even came from. And it turns out the Hunter High School Key Club got together without asking us or consulting us or anything, and just thought this would be a good thing for us to do. And so they, within two months, they gathered that money, again, $1,400. So we wanted to honor them and recognize that really cool fundraiser that they did. And so we've arranged that for tonight. Now, little caveat, they're high school kids, and we haven't heard back from them since May. So maybe the victim advocate will take the recognition, whatever that is, or stand there, or something like that. We, I think we should still do it, but I don't know if anyone's gonna show up on their behalf.
And I did try to confirm with them a couple of times. They did confirm in end of May, said that they would be here on this date. They actually selected June 24th. So I'm hoping, I just tried to contact them, but I'm guessing with it being summer, they're not checking emails. School emails, so we're hoping.
They put it in their calendar?
So if they don't show up, do we want to wait until they're back in school to recognize them?
Sure, I mean.
If we don't see anybody come?
Yeah, the council could just do a motion to continue that item at that time, sure.
I think it'd be nice to have them.
Yeah, and what happened to the funds?
The funds will be used towards emergency victim advocate or victim needs, not victim advocates. Victim needs from the victim advocates. That seems like, you know, a hotel for the night or something like that. Food, bus passes, all that kind of thing.
How they did the fundraising?
We have no idea. Jess, could you have any idea how the Key Club did the fundraiser? Like just internally?
They didn't. They just tell me what they did. Reach out and let me know that they've done the fundraisers for our program.
That is really the max of kindness. I'll have the next one, too. Okay, so our ALJ program has been going really well. We had a really great judge, Matt Hanson. And we renewed his, his contract back in January. So we'd gone for a year, and we renewed his contract back in January, and we were really happy with him. Well, he's so darn good that he became a real judge. And he's a, so, so they selected him, and then it went really fast to the point where he said, I can't do it anymore. Like, I'm going to be on the bench in Farmington in mid-June. So we didn't have really a ton of time to turn it around, but we were able to issue a RFP. And we, we sent that out, and we actually got a really good group of people. We got about eight, I think. Candidates, maybe seven or eight, but they were all very experienced. And so we evaluated the RFP based on their experience and then their hourly rate. And we ended up on this guy named Kevin Thurman. He's, he'll be doing this on a part-time basis. His full-time job is the city attorney for Saratoga Springs. I've sat on a couple panels with him, and he's a super smart guy and really passionate about code enforcement. So I think he'll be a great fit. I'm frankly, I'm glad that it turned out like this. I didn't put my finger on the scale or anything, we just evaluated it like we should, but I think this will be really good. So the item for tonight, and the reason it got fast-tracked is because we have Ace Court, and we need him to, to come preside over Ace Court at the end of June. So anyway, any questions about that?
What's Ace Court?
Oh, great. Someday, I would love to show you kind of the full, the full program that we have, but it's Administrative Code Enforcement Court. And so it is a, it's a, it's a way that we handle ordinance violations in a non-criminal way that are able to, we're able to quickly get through a civil process where, like messy yards and, and other violations like that are able to be handled in a, in a quick time with fines and abatement as opposed to criminal penalties. So it's a, it's a program that we pioneered here in West Valley many, many years ago, and then had been using ever since. And a lot of the other cities, including Saratoga Springs, where Mr. Thurman works, have copied our, our ordinance and use it as well.
Do they have regular hours, is it just designated?
It's every two weeks, as I recall. It's every two weeks, as I recall, and on, on the mornings. And it's just via Zoom now. And so we can just get you a link, and, and any of you, obviously, are welcome to come, come observe it. But yeah, very efficient, well-run court, and we're very happy with it. And we're very happy with the old judge, and we think we'll, we think we'll like this new one as well.
Any questions for us? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, our presentations, first one is a report by myself for the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. The legislature passed a new code 17B11003. It's been in effect probably four or five years. A member of the board comes and reports about tax increases. We're gonna have a rate increase of about 4.9% and a tax increase of approximately 9%. So taking our, I'm gonna redefine this so I don't mess it up. So taking our triple oh three one one rate to triple oh three four zero. It'll raise about $2.6 million. The increase is mainly inflation. And then just on one of our projects we're doing right now, the pipe is coming out of Mexico, and the tariff on it is about $650,000. So just increases like that are affecting the budget out at the water district. So I'll give that report next week as required by state law. We have to do it within 40 days of receiving the letter, and that's why we're studying it now and then passing it or not tonight. Oh, we don't even pass, no action, it's just a report.
So we're gonna have to do. But what's the dollar effect on a result?
I don't know, it's not very much. I didn't look that up on my report, but I can tell you by regular meeting, it was our last packet. So any questions besides?
You had mentioned that just now, I think you said that there's a tax increase as well as a rate increase?
Yeah, so you're, it's one of those slippery slopes. When you ask for conservation, people try to use less water, so you have less revenue from the water cells. So to get, capture the same amount of money for that third leg on the stool, then you have to raise the water rates to collect the same amount of money to pay off bills. So conservation doesn't mean your water rates go down, it means they go up.
Well, the attachment just showed, at least under meter charges, no change.
Correct, as far as installation of meters. That's your meter when you install. And it's, the rate charged to the water districts will go up, and that is different in every district depending on their demand, their peak demand and their daily peak and hourly peak. And they test those or monitor those in July, and then they base it on that. So a lot of districts will use out of their well water and not affect their taking from the district to lower that peak in July. And then others don't, so. And then there's a lot of new development coming in that will affect what infrastructure needs to be put in, so.
Will this increase help pay for that infrastructure, or they typically bond for that?
They bond, but they just mainly have the maintenance, repair, and maintenance that this will affect. And I think the next bond is this year next, and it's gonna be about 80 million, so. No other questions on that one? Okay, and then we have our public hearings, which will turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick for application Z1 2025. It's a zone change from A to RM.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Pastrick, Community Development Director. So this property is at 3001 West, 4100 South. It's just over one and a half acres. Again, the, the zone change request here is from the A-zone to the RM-zone. And we've got a few slides to show you here. So this property, you can see outlined in red. To orient everyone, you have the Sunny Brook condos to the west, and then also Valley Junior High is kind of in the southwest corner. And then you have homes on the northeast and west, or excuse me, northeast and south sides of the property. Here's a close-up here. So in the northwest corner of the property, you have an existing home. Then there's a garage, and then a few other outbuildings on the property right now. So that's how the, how it's developed currently. And this slide here just shows the existing zoning. So again, the outline in red is the property in question, and that pale green color is the agricultural zoning. And then to the west is the, you have the, it's actually duplex zone where the condos are. That's the darker green, and then all the yellow, of course, is the single-family residential zoning. So initially, the, the concept that was first presented to Planning Commission was to retain the house, which is this, this structure right here, and then essentially build a new garage behind that, and then building three townhome buildings that had four units, and then the fourth building would have two units in it. After looking at that, the commission was concerned about just the size of those buildings. And so the applicant came back with a different proposal, which is this, which is essentially separating those buildings so that there's only two units per building. So these would be what's proposed as rental townhomes. These would all have driveways and then enough surface parking in addition to the driveways to meet the, the 4.75 stalls that we require for, for townhomes. And looking at this concept, just to sort of orient everyone, so that the units would actually be facing the perimeter. So you have, as you drive in the center here, these would be all the garages, kind of the backs of the units, and then the, the fronts are sort of facing the outside. This was the original elevation where they had the four units in a building. And then the, the modified version is this, where again, there's only the two units in the building. And then this image just shows the floor plan, so the, the image. And this is essentially the, the ground floor with the garage, the kitchen and living area. And then the upper floor, there's three bedrooms on the, for each unit on the upper level. Just some pictures here. So these would be the condos to the west of the property, so these are right on 4100 South. Another shot looking west on 4100 South. You'll notice here that in front of the condos, there are, there's a essentially a park strip, and then you have sidewalk. This property just has the sidewalk right up against the curb. And so one of the items in the development agreement is to, to put in a park strip so that you have park strip and sidewalk on 41. This is the existing house, so again, based on this proposal, that house would remain on the site. And you can see the garage off to the left, so that would actually be demolished, and then re, they would rebuild a new garage behind the house. And then just, I believe this is the last slide here that just shows a little bit off, a little further to the east. You kind of can see back towards the, further back into the property and a couple of the other outbuildings further to the south. And then, yeah, one more shot. So this is looking north across 4100 South, so you can see the homes on the north side of, of the street. And yeah, that's the last slide here. So in, in the proposal here, along with the zone change, there is a development agreement. And just to highlight, so altogether, there's a total of 14 townhomes that are proposed. So if you include the existing home, that will put the density about just under 10 units per acre. The general plan does call for medium density, which would be between seven to 12 units per acre. Some of the items that we have in the development agreement, again, get into things like the, the number of units, the design, mention the park strip, and also having management standards for the, the units, as those would be rental units. So that gives you kind of an overview of the, of what's proposed here.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pastrick?
Yes, so I'm sure the condos are owner-occupied, homes are owner-occupied. Heard from any residents about this being rental?
Yeah, so in fact, Mike Malcolm, who's here, came to Planning Commission, and, and his concern was really just having single family on essentially three sides, that he felt like single family would be a better fit here. So that was definitely a comment that was made.
If there's any, tied to converted to for sale units, the developer?
They, from the beginning, they mentioned their, their preference to do rental, rental housing here. So to my knowledge, that's not something they want to pursue. I can again ask the question, but from the beginning, they mentioned they wanted it to be for rent.
You heard, do you want to provision your developments for, like after five years, it can convert to?
So it's possible. There are certain building codes that I believe are different, and I can research this if you're doing for sale versus for rent. So I have heard of situations where people will build them as if they were gonna be for sale, even though they're rented, and then that way that it keeps the door open so they could be sold later on as individual units. If they were to do that, they'd have to build it slightly different. I think it has to do with the fire rating between units is the, is the.
Setback between units.
So that, so it's possible, but, and at least I recall, maybe one or two developers in the past that have done something like that, just with the part, leaving open the possibility.
What's a little surprise on the traffic study? We're already over level sort of C and almost D. Is that a round of the, the development, or is it just, it's going to be?
Yeah, so you didn't, in this case, the, the size of the project didn't more like a full-scale traffic study. That was more, we have sort of general rules of thumb for traffic volumes along, along streets. The, the target we have is, is D, is kind of what we, we plan for in our, in our system. So it's, I, given the size of this project being pretty small, it's, it wouldn't put us over, over D. So I don't, in my view, I don't think that's a major concern or consideration in this case.
So Steve, can you explain something from the Planning Commission minutes? They were talking about that second floor looking more like a boarding house than a home? Am I misunderstanding what that?
Right, so if you go back, and I, I don't have the prior, I'll go back to the floor plan here for a minute. The. Well, actually, this is the, this is actually the modified version. So originally, they had, on the upper level floor plan, they had four bedrooms. And, and the concern, so in this case, if you look at the units, I'll use my pointer here. If you look at this unit, it's more like a master bedroom, where you have a bathroom and a bedroom altogether. Before, they had, the bathrooms were sort of only accessible from this sort of common area on the second floor, and then you had two bedrooms here. So just the layout, you know, and talking with building inspection, it was more like, almost like a student housing, if you will. So we're like, no, we need to modify that so it's more like you have a master bedroom with its own bathroom, and then the rest then share the, the other bathroom. So we felt like that's more typical of a townhome versus the, the prior, the prior design. So that's what that, that discussion was about.
And will these units have basements?
No, these, these would be slab-on grade.
I guess my issue is, it looks like all the houses around are single-level, and this being so tall and the balcony being on the sides of the existing homes, I have more concern with that, with people being able to use their backyards without it looking like, or without people just being in the backyard, basically.
Sure. I know in, in the Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion, there, there are, there is a mix. So there are some two-story homes, I don't recall the, like, percentage, but, but yes, there are definitely some single-level homes adjoining it.
And even the condos to the west are sing, are single-level? And do they have basements?
I don't believe the condos to the west have basements that I remember when I was out there.
Then on the main level, they've got another bedroom slash office next to a bathroom.
Right.
It really does look like they're gonna be renting out rooms and.
I mean, I didn't really drill down into the development agreement. Is there a restriction on who they can rent these to? Could they re, rent each room separately? How does that affect parking?
So the, the, so our code doesn't allow them to, to rent separately, so that's already addressed in the code. One of the things that, that the Planning Commission had requested, and, and this is something in talking with legal, they felt like was something we could do, and this is in the, in the management standards, so it's. So if you look at Exhibit D in the development agreement, so this is like the very last page of the development agreement, item number 19. It says, "Only those persons listed as residents in the lease agreement shall be permitted to live in any unit, and then no more than four unrelated persons can live in a single townhome unit." So that's, that's what ultimately the Planning Commission had suggested as language to try to address that concern.
Around the one picture of the condos, it does look like a window well in front of that white car, so that's why I was thinking there was basements. That one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so. It does look like from that one, so I, yeah, that's something I can confirm, too, is if that's kind of consistent throughout, if some do, some don't.
Yeah, I'm just not liking the two-story.
We, we did, one of the, so when the, the Planning Commission was discussing the concern about height and massing, we, his staff had suggested, what if you were to just, you know, do single level with basements? And they, they really wanted to do the two-story, and I, I suspect it was more for cross-considerations, but yeah, that's, that's something they, the app can still want to do two-story above grade.
And the rental aspect just doesn't make it seem logical for that location. I agree with that.
You've got like a tight living room on the main level, another living space upstairs. I mean, it just really, just doesn't feel like, yeah, single-family.
Yeah, it's like Councilmember Norfeld has his hand on it. Okay, Councilman Norfeld?
Hi, everyone. I have a couple of questions. Is, since the front of the homes will be on the east and west where there's no road, is there like a sidewalk or something like that that's gonna go in front of, of those homes?
Yeah, so in, in, hopefully, this site plan, you, you can see here, the, so basically, they have a, a kind of a loop, if you will. So the sidewalk runs along the east side, then down along the south side, and then back again on the west side. So there's a sidewalk around the perimeter, so that, that would be accessible to the fronts of the units.
And that's what the six-foot is?
Correct.
And then the 12, or the 14 is just grass or whatever?
Right, so they're, they're showing about, so from, from the front of the unit to the sidewalk is six, then the six-foot walk, and then 14 feet, so a total of, was 26 feet from the front of the unit to the, the edge of the property.
Okay. And the, the driveway through the middle is, I guess, a shared driveway?
Correct.
Okay, but not a public right-of-way?
Correct.
Did, did they show us the elevation of the, showing the garages?
We do have, let's see, so this image here, so it's the, the middle one would be the backs of the units.
Okay. Um, yeah. I have some qualms about all that, but.
And are these the elevations that show, bringing the standards up to our standards with the enhanced windows? And all that, or are these previous to those changes?
So they, they made some revisions to these that get the, get them closer, basically. We did put language, we, we put language in the agreement that says they would still have to make some revisions to, to meet all the standards, basically saying, in fact, we'll get to that. So again, in the development agreement, we use language, and this is pretty typical. All new townhomes would be, be built substantially like this, but then all the requirements in the other standard section, which is basically our, our code, we include in the, in the agreement. And the reason why we basically put a copy of the code standards in the agreement is in the event that the, the state decides to have us not have those in the code anymore, as they've done before, then they're still in the agreement.
Okay. And then what kind of landscaping do they have to put around it in that 14 feet?
So we do have, off, offhand, I, I don't believe there's like specific, like tree standards for that space when you're just, when you're residential to residential. So for example, if you're commercial to residential, there are specific treatments. But in this case, it would need to be landscaped, it's just, there's not like a, like a prescribed ratio or a number of, of trees, at, at least along the perimeter. They will still have to have trees, and that's something that if the zone change is approved, they would, this would be a conditional use, so they'll go back to the Planning Commission for a review of the, of the landscape plan.
Any other questions for Mr. Pastrick? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to our resolutions. We'll begin with twenty five dash ninety one and invite Mr. Anderson up. We haven't seen Brock for a long time.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you. We have Brock Anderson of Planning and Zoning. So this is a resolution for a development agreement at the property of seventy ninety two West Gates Avenue. So there is a current development agreement in place right now. So this would be to take place of that current agreement. So basically, the history on this lot, and I'll just orient you. This is the South Frontage Road. So we're in the northwest corner of the city, the two oh ones up here, and then Gates Avenue is right here. So in twenty seventeen is when the other development agreement went into effect. And at the time, the owner wanted to have an outside storage business business on the lot. And so basically, that agreement addressed a wall. He wanted a taller wall than what was allowed in the code. He wanted an eight foot masonry wall. And so the agreement said that he could do an eight foot wall. And there was also some language that the wall could, if he got a variance from the Board of Adjustment, the wall could go into some of the setbacks. So he was successful in getting the variance on both the north and south. And so the wall was constructed. So this is just an image of what's there currently on the property. The property is since sold to Mr. Barrett. And he has a construction company business. He'd like to develop the property with an office and a warehouse for that business. And so the current development agreement didn't tie the wall to the outside storage use. So we just informed Mr. Barrett that we would need to amend the agreement. Here's a site plan or a concept of what he'd like to do on the property. So again, it would be this kind of headquarters for this business with the office and then parking and then the green is landscaping. And so with the new agreement, basically, it addresses the first two items still deal with the wall. So the current owner does not intend to do outside storage, but we wanted to leave that in there in case he decided to sell the property or this didn't go through. If someone in the future wanted to still do outside stores, they'd still be required to do that eight foot wall that was in the previous agreement. And then that wall would just need to meet our standards in our code. And then the next item, three, four, and five, have to deal with some right of way improvements that Public Works will require as part of the development. And then the sixth item is just addressing some landscaping. So if I go back to the site plan, again, they did get a variance where they could eliminate all of the landscaping along Gates Avenue. And so this would just say that in that right of way area between Gates Avenue and the property line that the that he would landscape it as if it was the requirements in our current code. So fifty percent live plant material in that area. And then the last item in the agreement is just that the building would meet our commercial design standards.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Anderson?
So it looks like you're making a new entrance on the frontage road. They'll have to modify the fence.
Yes. So the fence will be coming down completely. And then, yeah, there will be an access off the front of the road and one off of Gates Avenue. They don't intend to put a fence. Again, there's language for a fence in case they did want an outside storage area. Or again, someone else came along and wanted that, they would be required to screen it. But they don't currently have a
They'll keep the entrance off like Gates Avenue as well.
Yes.
Is the remaining piece of property that city property?
On this end? Yeah, that's a large kind of piece of city right of way that is not their property.
The end of.
So it'll
the weed fence.
Well, currently, yes, it is. It will need to be maintained. So they'll need to keep it weed free, but it is a large area. We didn't feel like we could require them probably to landscape all of the substantial area. But so the current language is they just need a landscape right here along Gates Avenue. And they will have landscaping on their own property in this area.
So the green space is all of their landscaping?
Yes.
And then they'll add more on Gates.
Right.
So how are we gonna maintain our property so that all the weeds just don't end up growing in there long?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, that's not their problem. That's us problem. Hey.
Do we do we need all that right away?
Should we sell it to them?
Can we give it to them?
Oh, yeah, give it to them.
I'll refer to the back on that. Yeah.
We don't need all of this.
Strange. We look at it the next week. Yeah.
Makes sense. The question is whether they would want it and I don't think it really benefited.
No.
They would have landscape.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, now go to resolution twenty five dash ninety two. A federal aid agreement. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Wilson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Koby Wilson with the Engineering Division. So we recently finished up the environmental document for our thirty nine hundred South project. This is a project that we're working with Taylorsville on. It essentially is for roadway improvements along thirty nine hundred South from Redwood Road to the Jordan River Bridge. Those improvements will include the roadway improvements that we need. A mill and fill in some areas, but it's going to be full depth reconstruction in other areas as well as some widening. A big component of this project is adding twelve foot wide shared use pass on each side of the road. So this will actually connect to a much bigger shared use path project on the east side of the river that will eventually actually go all the way to twenty three hundred east. That's one of the projects identified on Utah's new Utah Trail Network System. So we've been working on this for a little while. The county worked with us a couple of years ago. We entered an interlocal agreement with them for three million dollars a couple of years ago to get started on the environmental document and and giving us some of the initial funding for the project. Since then, we've submitted several applications to try to secure additional funding for the project. We have been successful in getting some TAP funding as well as some STP funding from WFRC. And that's the purpose of this federal aid agreement is to be able to accept those funds. We have to execute this federally agreement so that we can move forward with the design. As mentioned, this is a joint project with Taylorsville. So we'll be hiring a consultant to do this design. And once this federal aid federal aid agreement is executed, then we can put out the RFQ so that we can get a designer in place and get the design started. You'll see here that this this agreement is just for the highlighted portions there. There will be a modification to this agreement coming in the future. We found out in March that WFRC is recommending another two point five million dollars for this project. That won't show up until October, but at that point, we'll have to do a modification. And we've been working with UDOT as well, who has identified two point eight million dollars of highway safety spot highway spot improve from their highway safety spot improvement program. So so we were glad to hear that. That's new news. That's just a couple of weeks ago. Like I said, this will enable us to get a consultant on board, get the design done, and then keep looking for for additional funding opportunities. But at this point, we're hoping for construction in twenty twenty seven.
Okay, any questions? My one question is, does it expand into the green space on both sides of thirty nine?
It it definitely will a little bit. Yes.
Affect our welcome sign?
Uh, yeah, there we'll have to make some improvements as well to the welcome sign. Yes.
But are just?
The design in that area. So we have some widening that we have to do, and a lot of that's going to depend on if we say that again.
What did you say? We have to do what?
Some widening that we have to do, where we don't have the curb and gutter, and we don't have certain drainage improvements. And until we get a good survey, we don't know how much excavation we're gonna have to do, but more than likely, that sign is gonna have to be moved.
Okay, to the road, there's a lot higher than the trailer park?
Yes. Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And and we'll definitely have some, once we get into design, we'll definitely have some some grading issues that we have to deal with. That's actually one of the big components, why we don't know how much we can just do a mill and fill versus reconstruct. And it's gonna be a lot of those grading concerns that we'll identify in the design process.
So for the first time ever going underneath that bridge, I noticed Mill Creek's on one side, South Salt Lake's on the other side that you're driving into, which was pretty unique. I'd never really put that as being Mill Creek on the south side of our west.
Yep, four four jurisdictions all come come together at that bridge right there. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to resolution twenty five dash ninety three and turn the time over to Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon. I'd like to speak on twenty five ninety three and ninety four, if that's if that's okay. They're very closely related to one another. Several years ago, the city acquired, actually was given property from Kennicott when we were doing work on Beagle Road and the the Ryder Canal detention basin property that's just east of sixty four hundred west, west of sixty four hundred west. And that it was it was a long strip of property that paralleled the Ryder Canal and really has no use, but but Kennicott was worried about canal liabilities and other things, and they just would rather have the property gone. So they gave it us. That property came with a restriction that we couldn't sell it to any other non governmental entity. And we now have somebody that wants to purchase that property. The Van Trust Development is developing the property just south of the canal. And benefits by gate acquiring this property from us to be able to access their property from Beagle Beagle Road. So so the first two items, the first item, the twenty five dash ninety three is a release of the the easement. The the sale, the restrict, the sale restriction on the the property. And that will would need to be executed before the the sale of the property. That's why we've kind of put them in that order on the agenda. And then the second item is actually the the sale of the property from West Valley City to this entity called SI West Valley Phase One LLC. And we've known the development as the Van Trust. So the sales price is roughly two hundred six thousand dollars, about ten dollars a square foot, and it's a recommendation of the council.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson on this one?
Are you gonna buy garbage cans with that two oh six that the plan?
That's certainly an option. We'll buy whatever you let us buy with it.
Just kidding.
Always heard buying garbage cans, aren't they? In that siding. And if the the council had an interest, these these two items, we took outside of the the consent agenda, because first of all, the value of the property that we're selling is is high. But also that those two items need to be consecutive with one another on the agenda. So they can either stay as they are. And you can vote them on vote on them individually, or you could choose to move them into the consent agenda if you have any concerns.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, I'm also prepared to answer a few questions that you may or may not have on the consent agenda, because these are a little bit different if you are interested.
Did you really have any questions on any of those items?
And I could just give you a brief summary if you if you'd like. It's there. These are land transfers associated with cooperative agreements that was added with UDOT from the Mountain View Corridor. And so it's been a long time since that facility has been completed, and we're finally getting around to actually transferring the land. And so the first two are associated, it's there's a large detention basin parcel, about fifteen plus acres that is just south of Parkway Boulevard, west of Mountain View Corridor, adjacent to the city's Meadowlands Detention Basin property. So it kind of becomes a very large stormwater detention area that we that they're giving to us. We will have the maintenance responsibility on that property. We'll have to keep the weeds down, but we can also use it for recreational uses as well. And so this was something that was agreed to in the cooperative agreement, but now we're actually doing the transfer of the land. So these first two parcels are the conveyance of it. It's the the first one is a parcel that's just west of that that could be used for a road. And then and then the second one is the the large detention basin. And then the item C is right of way transfers. They're they're transferring right of way for twenty four hundred south and Anna Caroline Drive that was built by UDOT. Just the new road that 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 goes kind of right by their, it's right by their maintenance facility on twenty four hundred south and fifty six hundred west is the right of way transfer. And then the others are old roads that that Mountain View Corridor now sits on top of that will now become UDOT right of way.
Any questions on any of those?
So you mentioned for recreational purposes?
Yes.
So what do you mean by that?
We can we can build a park and stuff, or whatever. Or we just know keep the weeds down and it's used for stormwater. Weeds and it's graded to hold stormwater. So it'll it'll have to retain its stormwater function and and be able to be flooded in storm in rain events, but almost ninety nine, ninety nine point plus percent of the time, fifteen acres or just a drainage parcel itself.
Not a bet.
It's a good opportunity for the city. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. So were there any of the resolutions that the council wanted to move to the consent agenda?
You'll go C and D.
Okay. Anyone else have an object? Anybody have an objection to that? There we go, Ben. Great. And now we'll go to our communication items. Well, we have a presentation by the Great Salt Lake Water Conservation Toolbox. And tonight will be presented by Arianna Mason with the SWCA Environmental Consultants.
Hi, thank you all for having me this evening. My name is Ari Mason. I'm a Lead Water Resources Specialist at SWCA Environmental Consultants. Tonight, I'm here to introduce a presentation that we worked with the Great Salt Lake Advisory Council to develop. The council teamed up with a suite of conservation partners to provide an overview of tools available to cities and towns in the Great Salt Lake Basin. They were aware that there's a lot of tools for water resource conservation on a number of different platforms developed by a number of different groups and wanted to pull all of those together in a single location and provide just some context of how those can be paired together and utilized to support water conservation. So this presentation and associated contact list is provided to help you all navigate and understand the resources that are available for you to use. With that, I'll let them start the presentation and then I'm around afterwards for any questions.
The Great Salt Lake Advisory Council was established in twenty ten to provide guidance to the state of Utah on the sustainable use, development, and protection of Great Salt Lake. In collaboration with the Utah Legislature and various conservation organizations, the council is currently focused on maintaining adequate water flows to the lake. In this presentation, the council has teamed up with a suite of conservation partners to provide an overview of water conservation tools that are available to cities and towns.
Utah is constantly in drought or preparing for the next. So conservation is just as important during low water years as in a normal one. When the Great Salt Lake hit record lows in twenty twenty two, more people than ever realized how dire the situation was. We saw unprecedented interest, legislation, and investment. The state has grown its understanding of how the Great Salt Lake works, its value, and the importance of maintaining it as a resource for economic, environmental, and recreational opportunities. However, there's still work to do. We need help from everyone to conserve water, and municipalities play a vital role.
The Great Salt Lake provides immense value to Utah. The lake helps preserve Utah's future by reducing the risk of harmful dust storms from the dry lake bed. It also supports local industries and thousands of jobs, including the ski industry, critical minerals, and roughly half of the world's supply of brine shrimp eggs, which are used in shrimp farms to help feed the world. In addition, the lake sustains more than twelve million migrant In addition, the lake sustains more than twelve million migratory birds each year. Without widespread municipal and domestic water conservation, the Great Salt Lake faces continued declines and the kind of devastating environmental and economic consequences that have happened when other large salt lakes have dried up. To protect this vital ecosystem while accommodating future population growth, all water users in the Great Salt Lake Basin, including agricultural, industrial, commercial and residential users, must work together to use less water and where possible to dedicate and deliver that saved water to the lake. Similar efforts are underway to work with a variety of water users. For example, the state has invested hundreds of millions of dollars in helping farmers find ways to grow the same crops while using less water. And the legislature has enabled water banking and other tools to make it easier to deliver saved water to the lake. The way we use water in homes and businesses matters. Unless we find effective ways to save water, a growing population and new demand for water could further reduce the rivers and streams that flow into the lake, making a bad situation even worse. While all water conservation efforts, including water-efficient in-home appliances can help the lake, the single most important thing that people can do is to use less water outside their homes and businesses. Less grass watered less often. More drip irrigation, more drought tolerant plans. Schools, churches and businesses should lead the way. Cities and counties can and should play a key role in helping ordinary citizens make these changes.
Effective water conservation starts with a shared understanding of key concepts that are commonly used in water conversations. Let's start with the differences between diversions and depletions. Terms that are commonly used in water conservation goals and transactions. Diversion refers to removing water from its natural source, such as a river or reservoir, for use in irrigation or drinking water systems. A lot of this water returns to the natural system as treated wastewater or irrigation return flow. Depletion, however, occurs when water is consumed and cannot be reused, such as when it evaporates or is taken out by plants. Outdoor water use, particularly lawn irrigation, often leads to depletion, making it a primary focus for conservation efforts. By reducing outdoor water use, we can significantly lower overall depletion and protect this vital resource. Another critical strategy is shepherding water to the Great Salt Lake. This means ensuring water reaches the lake rather than being diverted or consumed along the way by other users. Finally, water efficient landscaping refers to practices like reducing or replacing turf lawns with native or drought tolerant plants. These practices can save significant amounts of water from depletion while supporting local ecosystems.
The state's regional water conservation goals established in twenty-nineteen are for Utah's nine municipal and industrial river districts, which are represented by members on the Board of Water Resources. River districts and conservation regions align with the boundaries of one or more counties. Each region has a goal percentage of water reduction to meet by twenty-thirty, expressed in terms of diversions. It is important to note that these goals are currently being updated. While communities should strive to meet their percent reduction goal according to the twenty-nineteen report, they should be aware that it might change. The Division of Water Resources or your local water conservancy district can help answer questions related to water conservation goals.
Our office has established a goal of ten percent reduction depletion across the Great Salt Lake Basin. Data from Dr. David Tarbon at Utah State University shows that this amount or two hundred and fifty thousand acre feet of additional water annually could be enough to shift the long-term downward trend into a positive one. Once it's conserved, we need to dedicate and deliver it to the lake. Conserve, dedicate and deliver means working with all agencies, districts, cities and parties involved in the lake to help preserve and protect it. We need conservation, but that's not the only piece. Once the water is conserved, we need to dedicate it to the Great Salt Lake and make sure it's delivered there. We all use water. That means we all get to play a part in responsibly managing our supply.
There are two important recent state requirements that relate to municipal water conservation. First, all counties and most cities are required to update their general plan with a water use and preservation element by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. This new element should include a water budget and conservation methodology. The Division of Water Resources, Division of Drinking Water and Department of Ag and Food can help municipalities with these planning requirements. Second, in the twenty-twenty-five session, the Utah Legislature passed House Bill two seventy-four, which among other things requires that municipal water suppliers adopt a water conservation-related rate for the highest block unit of water used by residential customers in a tiered conservation rate structure. The rate charge will fund water conservation efforts by the municipality and must be adopted by July first, twenty-twenty-seven. Utah Waterways has resources to help cities with customized rate structures that meet this requirement.
Several organizations have developed tools and resources to help municipalities meet their water conservation goals. The Great Salt Lake Water Conservation Toolbox provides a variety of practical tools and examples, including model ordinances, example rate structures, incentives and rebates. Together, these methods influence behavior through regulation, economic motivation and positive reinforcement. Utah Waterways assists municipalities with custom rate structures and University of Utah Law School can help cities with custom ordinances. The growing water smart workshops organized by the Division of Water Resources and USU unite key city and county staff to integrate water and land use planning, encouraging collaboration and implementation of policy tools that promote water efficiency, smart growth and watershed health. The Division of Water Resources administers multiple rebate and incentive programs, including landscape incentives, toilet replacements and smart irrigation controllers. Planning support and educational initiatives like Slow the Flow, Water Check and Water Maps offer additional guidance for reducing water use and improving efficiency. These tools, resources and collaborative efforts enable communities to plan for growth while ensuring they remain within their available water supplies and meet long-term conservation goals.
The Great Salt Lake Advisory Council, with support from SWCA, has developed model outdoor and indoor water ordinances that cities can adopt to enhance water conservation efforts. These ordinances are featured in the Great Salt Lake Water Conservation Toolbox Report, which includes a dedicated chapter explaining how cities can customize ordinances to meet their specific goals and needs. The outdoor water use ordinance outlines key requirements for water efficient landscaping and irrigation practices, including guidelines for landscape design and materials, irrigation schedules, advanced irrigation technology design and the use of secondary water systems. The indoor water use ordinance complements these efforts by focusing on water efficiency inside buildings. It includes requirements for high-efficiency fixtures that reduce water consumption and guidelines for timely leaks, repairs to prevent unnecessary water loss. Together, these ordinances provide cities with practical tools to promote conservation while maintaining flexibility to address local needs. By adopting new water conservation ordinances, cities can take meaningful steps towards protecting the Great Salt Lake and ensuring sustainable water use for future generations. The Great Salt Lake Water Conservation Toolbox Report features a table that outlines low, moderate and high conservation standards for each user classification. For example, grass lawns for single-family residential properties and secondary water users shall account for no more than fifty percent of the front and side yard landscaped area under the low standard and twenty percent under the high standard. More aggressive standards apply to multifamily residential, industrial and commercial and public institutional users, where the low standard limits grass lawns to thirty percent of the total landscape area and the high standard prohibits grass lawns entirely. These customizable standards allow cities to tailor their conservation efforts to meet diverse needs while achieving meaningful water savings.
Each municipality is different and so are its needs, opportunities and policy constraints. While the Great Salt Lake Water Conservation Toolbox offers model ordinances and policy strategies, cities seeking to conserve water may need additional help determining which approaches best fit their unique needs or help adapting model language to their unique circumstances. The Great Salt Lake Project at the University of Utah College of Law provides free specialized support to fill this gap. We offer complimentary in-depth reviews of municipal water conservation programs and identify realistic opportunities tailored to each city's context. For cities interested in updating or adopting water conservation ordinances, we can help select, adapt or draft ordinances that align with local needs, utilizing broader tools available in the toolbox. We offer additional support for other policy development and for seeking grants, legislative appropriations or other funding to help offset the costs of conservation initiatives. These services are designed to work hand in hand with the resources in the toolbox.
As discussed earlier, there are new state requirements for municipalities to adopt tiered rate structures. And this is up by virtue of the adoption of HB two seventy-four by the state legislature in the last session. As a result, now is a great time for a municipality to begin reviewing its current water rate structure and the methodology used to design its rates. Using established rate design principles, tiered water rates can be designed to meet annual revenue requirements, provide for public acceptability, affordability, fairness and equity among user classes, and still encourage efficient use of water and elimination of wasteful water use practices. When you do look at your rates, it is recommended that you consider reducing or minimizing base charges in the cost of water to your customers by placing the majority of the cost in the volumetric rates. Those tiered rates, which are charged by using established and proven rate design principles. Water rates can then be designed to provide an optimum pricing signal for good water conservation results and still achieve other important objectives of the municipality. Take a look at HB two seventy-four. It's a very interesting bill.
Residential customers statewide can take advantage of rebate programs to save water and money. You can receive up to one hundred dollars for installing a water sense labeled smart irrigation controller and up to one hundred fifty dollars for replacing a pre-one-nine-ninety-four toilet with a water sense labeled model. For commercial customers and cities, additional rebate options are available. Reach out to the Division of Water Resources for more details. The Landscape Incentive Program offers up to three dollars per square foot for lawn replaced with water efficient landscaping. This program is open to most property types excluding golf courses, agricultural lands, sod farms, athletic fields and parks. To qualify, the project must be in a community with water efficient landscape standards for new development. These standards support better water resource planning as communities grow. Requirements and incentive amounts vary by location and we can help connect you with the right agency. Email us at waterwise@utah.gov for more information. Currently, sixty-seven percent of the Great Salt Lake Basin population lives in an eligible area. For eligibility details, incentive amounts, program guidelines and applications, visit slowtheflow.org. Together, we can conserve water and promote sustainable landscaping.
Utah State University's Center for Water Efficient Landscaping focuses on research, education and outreach with the mission to promote water conservation through environmentally, socially and economically sound landscape management practices. This is because in the municipal sector, we know that sixty-five percent of household water use is used to irrigate amenity landscapes, representing a significant opportunity for conservation. We also know that successful water conservation in the urban sector lies at the intersection of site conditions, plant materials, irrigation technologies and responsive human behavior. The faculty, technicians and students affiliated with our center work on these topics. The center also sponsors a monthly seminar series, Water Well with Sea Well, conducts qualified water efficient landscaper training in the state and produces a wide range of research-based materials aimed at promoting water conservation in urban landscapes. Two of Sea Well's programs focus on the capacity to conserve water applied to existing landscapes. The Water Maps Program utilizes water meter data, parcel data, land cover classification and localized evapotranspiration rates to compare how much water is applied to a landscape in relation to how much water it actually needs. In the image on the left, you can see the variability of water application across parcels with red indicating over irrigation and green efficient irrigation. This information may then be used by utilities to focus conservation efforts on properties with the most capacity to conserve and to provide individualized reports to water users. The Water Check Program provides landscape and irrigation system evaluations to voluntary participants in the state. Irrigation system issues are identified to improve water application efficiency along with customized irrigation schedules based on site conditions. Participants in the program reduce their outdoor water use by twenty-five percent on average without any other changes to the landscape, making it a very effective starting point for reducing outdoor water use. A third program focuses on integrating land and water planning to help communities grow water smart and reduce new urban water demands. In cooperation with the state's Division of Water Resources, we conduct workshops with community teams, producing guidebooks that contain toolboxes and case studies on planning and goal setting, water smart land use and development policies, watershed resilience and water smart infrastructure and water conservation and efficiency tools.
The Utah Water Value Study was recently completed by Envision Utah. Utah Waterways served as the managing partner. The study was funded by Utah Waterways, the Utah Division of Water Resources, Great Salt Lake Commission and the Nature Conservancy. Utahns now see low or moderate lawn landscaping as the most preferred options for Utah. While lawnless yards are still the least preferred in most areas of the state, the level of acceptance over the past decade has continued to rise. Utah Waterways is partnering with the Utah League of Cities and Towns to create recommendations and resources to improve municipal participation and success with water conservation objectives. Four demonstration projects are underway in Salt Lake County that will not only demonstrate how water-wise landscape should look, but meticulously document how to achieve the transformation through a series of videos which will be professionally filmed. The results will be advertised through the Slow the Flow campaign and viewers will be directed to existing resources and programs to help them achieve similar results. The Utah Plant Selector was also launched this spring to simplify the plant selection process for homeowners. The tool will also help us capture data that can be used as a means to get more Utah-happy plants into production so that our local plant supply chain can scale along with our conservation efforts while also benefiting agriculture and businesses here in Utah. Utah Waterways has assumed management of the statewide water conservation campaign, Slow the Flow. We will continue to coordinate with existing agency partners and seek to add more public and private sector partners to the campaign to contribute to the effort. It is critically important to have one marketing campaign that can drive to the many resources. Significant effort has already been expended by the partnering agencies to streamline and clarify the message while still appropriately directing inquiries to the correct resources.
In summary, Utah's water conservation partners are working together to help set attainable and fair water conservation goals, research and develop new tools that are relevant for Utah communities and to provide municipalities with implementation support and outreach assistance. However, successful implementation of new ordinances, rates, rebates and education relies on water conservancy districts, cities and counties. We hope the tools and resources discussed in this presentation will help you make decisions for your community that contribute to our shared goal to improve flows to the Great Salt Lake and prepare Utah communities for growth.
If we all voluntarily do our part, we can avoid costly and disruptive solutions mandated by courts or federal agencies. In short, Utah can show the way. We look forward to partnering with cities and counties throughout the basin to implement strategies that work for Utah's communities and that will benefit Great Salt Lake.
I'll just also note that in, in the YouTube link, there's a, a link in the description that takes you to the page that holds additional resources. This presentation is recorded on there. The goal of recording this in advance with the partners is so that this presentation can be shared amongst partners. So feel free to share the link as you see fit. There's also a summary PDF that includes links to all the different tools and resources that were shared as part of the presentation because we realized that that's a lot and there's a lot of tools out there and it can be confusing to understand how they all fit together. There's also a contact list on the link that is in the YouTube that is in the YouTube description for all of the different partners that were a part of this presentation for, that you can reach out to if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Art? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, now, now turn the time over to our victim services for an update. Turn the time over to Natalie Martinez-Purdy.
Good afternoon, I'm Natalie. I am one of the victim advocates. Just kind of wanted to go over a little bit of an update and just kind of speak about our team and what we do. We're a total of six advocates that kind of work with the entire city of West Valley. We do a few different things. Um, we do a few different things, um, and I could go over those. Um, so just this year, we've helped over two thousand victims um, and just have been providing different types of services. Um, one of the main things that we do is that we assist them with, um, court. So we're able to notify them of when they have court, assist them at court, answer any questions that they have. Um, we also work very closely with law enforcement. Um, one of the major things that we do, we go out on scene um, and we're able to assist any victims that, um, have any immediate need. Um, one of the biggest thing is getting them to shelter, just getting them connected with protective order information, um, and just being able to be there as a support person, um, if they need it. Um, we also do help with emergency financial assistance. Um, one of the biggest things is when it comes to our cases, we work a lot with DV. Um, and one of the biggest things is helping them with housing assistance. A lot of our victims unfortunately are financially dependent, um, on the individual that is committing the crime. Um, so that's one of the things that we try to help to ensure that they're able to be able to move forward and not have to go back into that situation. Um, one of the biggest things that we've been working on recently, um, was the unfortunate incident that occurred at West Fest. Um, our entire team has been helping with not only the direct victims, um, we've been helping them plan funerals, arrangements, and things like that. Um, but we've also been helping a lot with any witnesses, um, or anyone just that was involved um, and is wanting any type of assistance, getting them connected to therapy, um, getting them connected just to these different agencies and avenues, um, that they have in order to be able to get help. Um, unfortunately, it was a very, very tragic situation. And our, again, our team of six, um, we've kind of been fielding all of the different cases and all of the different calls that have been coming in for that. Um, luckily, we do have an incredible team, um, four of us, which speak Spanish, that have been able to also help with that side of things. Um, we've been able to just assist with all of that, and we also have been able to help with law enforcement um, when it comes to any questions that they had. Been able to kind of help navigate some of the things that maybe they needed some secondary assistance on. Maybe they're not able to reach out for them, um, to be able to answer some questions, so we kind of help assist with that as well. Um, like I mentioned, we do court a lot. Um, we assess with our district court and our justice court cases. Um, we're able to, you know, kind of be the liaison between our prosecutors and the victims and just make sure that any questions that they have, um, are answered. Um, so we do have a lot of assistance normally luckily um, through West Valley City and our different grants. Unfortunately, just last week, we did find out that we are losing a lot of our grant money. Um, so we're not really sure what, how that's going to affect us at this point to be able to assist people, um, especially with our emergency financial assistance. Um, we're still, you know, kind of trucking along and trying to figure out what we can do because we want to make sure that we're able to help as many people as we can. Um, and yeah, we're just, you know, we're kind of here to help provide that service um, for anyone that might need it. Um, and yeah, I don't know if there's, I know I kind of went through it pretty quick. Um, but I don't know if there's any questions or anything that I can answer regarding anything that I went over.
Any questions? Hey, thank you. I know you guys have a big role to play, and we appreciate all that you do. All right, we now have our council calendar. Are there any questions or concerns?
I haven't heard anything yet. Wednesday night and food trucks or anything, or they still?
Um, I believe that the food trucks were canceled, um, due to some issues. Um, I think we have someone from Parks on here. I'll see if maybe Candace might know. Candace, can you hear us? Oh, it looks like Jason's actually the one. We'll have Jason address that. Okay, Jason, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, so we, uh, had some vandalism in the restrooms, uh, where they, uh, the materials that we need to order were a week out. Um, we cannot have the restrooms open, uh, or if we can't have the restrooms open, then we can't have the water running. And being that we were inviting people in for the food trucks, uh, we didn't feel it was appropriate to uh, have them there without having a, uh, a restroom facility that they could utilize.
Are they just postponed or canceled for the summer?
No, they're just postponed. We're hoping to get them back online, uh, next Wednesday. So the, the toilet that was broken is supposed to be in hopefully, hopefully Monday. And then we'll get it installed and hopefully, hopefully have the food trucks back next Wednesday.
Thank you.
The line twenty fourth shows Pioneer Day is Monday. I think it's a Thursday.
We'll make sure we correct that. Thank you. Okay, seeing nothing else, we'll go to potential future agenda items. Did anybody have anything to bring up?
Could we have Eric present about the Ace Courts and his process? He offered some.
Okay, on a future communication?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's great. Anything else? Well, that's more of a study session agenda, right? Okay, seeing nothing else, any council reports?
Just like to thank Sam and Roxanne for their tremendous work in the incident. No, it didn't help the people who kept calling me when I kept referring back to them. We've already talked to them. We want to talk to you. I said, no, Eric's. Our policy is they speak for us. So, but, uh, they did a great job. I just want to thank them. Also, last Thursday, we had our first farmer's market. And, uh, it was bigger than the last one last year.
Great.
And we had a great crowd there. It looks like, you know, number one that we know best is the cinnamon rolls. And he said he's only doing one market this year.
That's good.
And it's ours, so. So, but it, uh, it's going and it seems to be successful.
Thanks. Doc, did you have something to eat?
Couple of things, um. Went to my hometown Interfaith Council, and it was really, what a, what a great group of people there. Had a good discussion with, uh, Father Sebastian. Um, the, this hospital is coming in. We were all ribbon cutting. That was pretty fun. The weather was good and, um, the speakers were awesome. We all had a good time, so we should do that. I told the technical job, and we should do that every West Fest opening night. Just have a, have a big party at night. People from the University of Utah to come down and party with us, so.
Well, we missed out on a great opportunity to have our picture taken in front of a big U. As a group, I know, I thought of it like three days later.
Well, I told John Flores that we should get a big WVC. They have a big U, and we should bring up every groundbreaking or ribbon cutting. That was pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Then the parade was fun and, um, I had, you know, candy.
I needed two more bags.
Two more bags.
And I, no, I was counting two, three, four kids through four, and I still ran out, so.
I just chucked it.
I know.
I thought it was a blast. I thought the parade was so much fun.
Yeah, it was a good experience, but I always run out, so that's why I was trying to be more conservative. I just need three more bags next year and I'll be happy.
Good couple of weeks. And that macro and that bag.
I can have two bags. It'll work.
Um, I went to the Juneteenth celebration. It was excellent, well attended. Um, I learned a lot. Both of those soldiers were in Utah. It was, it was really good. I really enjoyed that. I went to the farmer's market as well later, uh, tried to talk to several vendors there. Some of them, the, the, uh, the bakery that was selling bread, he said he doesn't know that he'll come back. And I said, well, you need to do smaller loaves because I'm not going to buy a loaf that's big. It was huge.
For two people.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I thought it was great. It was, uh, yeah, well attended. It was, it was big, so, yeah, those were two great events.
Great.
I attended the Veterans Committee meeting this Tuesday, and, uh, we discussed ideas on, uh, the creation of a coin or a chip. Either way, we're going to come back with some ideas, and that'll be used to help fundraise for like the Veterans Dinner, Veterans Day Dinner, or other activities. A lot of comments about the Memorial Day Ceremony. Pretty positive on how that went and how well it was attended. Just some comments on the grounds. Future events, making sure those are ready to go. Then I went to chill with the chief last night. That was, that was good. Took my grandson, got to play with dogs and canines.
So besides our PR staff, I really have to thank our police and fire for their quick response to the West Fest incident as well. And then the parks to just continue on and do the fireworks and just keep everything rolling, so. I thought they did a great job. Well, I guess fireworks weren't that night, though. They were the night before, so. All of staff stepped it up and did what we needed done, so I appreciate that. Okay, seeing nothing else, we don't have any for a closed session, correct? Okay, so we just have one more, oh, one more note. So an answer to Councilman Whitestone, the increase per home for the tax increase will be eleven dollars and seventy eight cents on average. Per year? Per year, yeah, per year for the water increase. Okay, right, one more motion.
What's your two?
All the members say aye?
Aye.
And we stand to try?